If you don't believe in God, you can't do anything. You can't do anything to make the world fair. You can't do anything. If you don't believe in God, you can't do anything. If you don't believe in God, you can't do anything. You can't do anything. If you don't believe in God, you can't do anything. If you don't believe in God, you can't do anything. Engos.
I am B.G. Kokweni representing the Mbashewe farmers. I want to start by tendering my apology. Should I go astray? You should understand that is because I don't know my facts whether they fit in this bill or not. I get two points that I want to raise. First point is that because in our country we noticed that corruption is taken over. Corruption is very rife in our country. Can there be maybe somebody who is in the good position, you abuse the position by taking a certain piece of land for himself or herself, whereas the individual knows that he or she doesn't have a right for in that piece of land? The second point that I want to raise, I'm sure as you came to this area, you went through Dujwa and you've noticed there are open pieces of land are getting up because people are taking over building houses, turning grazing land into communal land. Now my fear is that the livestock doesn't have anybody who will talk on its behalf. Because the grazing land is getting up, nobody will speak for the livestock. Is there maybe no other legislation that can be there for the protection of the livestock? As we see now that every day we are busy cutting our sites, even for our unmarried daughters to get our sites. And at that time we forget that we need that piece of land for the grazing of our livestock. During that time government is keeping quiet and saying nothing, whereas the government is noticing that the grazing land is being taken over. That is the request I want to raise. So if this my input doesn't fit in this legislation, I have already apologized for that.
Eh, di bulise. Ngumye ti wokamshanga lalu. Di suga kulamshaba wase duwesakwepe ndimele i duwesakwepe Community Property Association. Eh, paya kwaglenyo umshaba. Ya setlishwa ke ilen claim go 2001. Eh, saifumanake lo malanyana inga zangi tifige kuutu kwatwisa utivelo palanda oya setwesakwepe. Kodwa kunanamshangisukela ngo 2001, ai zangi setlishwa ilen claim ya setwesakwepe. Obake ndibu zumbu zorongo kulende awo ndibuza kuyona wundikolela. Di funuche kishake paya ndigumbasi state land i esia. I state land i esii eh iti nindwa yaso. Because ngoku tani fumani esindwa i state land sa wchala siseska kholumenti. Indonesi saike ina tina njenga banda ba besuso kulamshaba, njengbuza wchala lo sis state land. Engos.
I am Ndimshangala from duwesakwepe. And it duwesakwepe we had a claim. And then after the claim was settled in 2001, it was said that the money has been paid out for the development of that area. But we the claimants have never received even a cent from that money. We are still waiting for that. And after checking around, I've noticed that that piece is a state's land, that piece of land. And as we know that is a state's land, we have nothing to benefit in that piece of land. We want to know now, why can't we be given chance to do something in that piece of land so that we also have something to benefit as it is a state's land?
Eh, Molweni Kapakatjungin. Good morning to everyone. Eh, ndingo fezeke mbiiko. And I'm the councillor of the Democratic Alliance. But much as I am the councillor of the Democratic Alliance, I come from a village. I was born and bred from Kwardana in Dujwa. Fortunately, my chief, Chief Umgeke is here in this house now. He knows exactly our sufferings. He knows exactly how we were moved from one area to the other areas. And we never got compensated for that. We've been through different offices requesting for compensation because what happened or what took place is what people in my language call as imfudugo. We were moved away. And it was not easy for people to go and build new structures, you know, because they did not have anything. That is one of the reasons I joined Democratic Alliance. Because it's fighting for those people who are taken for granted by the ruling party. For instance, I'm one of the people who are saying today, that is why I'm standing boldly here, saying the land should be, no, the expropriation should be accompanied by the compensation. No land, eh, no to land expropriation without compensation. I've got the reasons as I've said before. And on top of that, the land audit has to be done. Section, section 123 or 12.3c of expropriation bill has to be clear because as it is now, it is not clear at all. Section 12.3 as a law must be clear on land bought versus land to rent. I am here for the people of South Africa, more especially from my village. Because some, most of them have died without being compensated. After they were moved in 1973, 1973, we were told, I was still young at the time, we were told, our parents were told that move and go and build there with what? They were never given a blue cent to go and build there. Instead, where they built or where they had their houses, the cent round the walls, they were told to demolish all those places and make it a way for the animals to go and graze on the land. That cannot be acceptable. Thank you very much.
Ummama kelo kbutetan ngutayba weti eh, uchikeye na ke u pamkoba abengutayba ukale wang umxali wa lapa kulengi. Kwaike uyavu yakba engosiza zilapa zalengi. Kupuka neengosienda wachala kuyo ai bislale kengekama. Uchike uyaku mbula kemi niyako 1973, besuso be tutulu akapshungu. Genze la eh imputuko enkulu, besuso emishabeni kakubee. Bazamele ukuulu abesluela uku buyelo, uku buyisa ukalomshaba. Ne siza tesabla maga troyenedi eh. Kugenge ngayendwa wabo nukuti akukomtu umamelayo kulumbutho upete yo. Ka ku, besama ukluela ama lungelo wabo nukulubu isela ukomshaba. Wayake kulumbutha kwanda ye na uluela umele abantu. Kungoko ke eh mi apa inga kunri. Esiti uku tatoa komshaba ma kunga bi konka pali kumbuyekeso. Ma ibe kona imbu yekeso bo na ben kulumbutho weti eh. Ba ipiki sa indio yu tatoa komshaba ka pali kumbuyekeso.
Si bulela kakulu kwabo sebe tetile, besitkelile ke izanda eh. Besichilo ke ledo. Sa kweni zanda sa tisa zobiza engosize.
Furthermore, what we also want to know, if there's somebody who came up with a project of development where we are saying, who has the right to benefit in that project? Is it the one who is in charge of the project or is it the people who are of the area? We also need that clarity. And furthermore, what does this expropriation bill say about women? Are women also involved or catered for in this bill? And furthermore, yes, we have places to stay after I've been allocated some sites, but we don't have that aid, which means the disloyal ticket can't be taken and the family can't be accepted. We are pleading with our places in us.
Ma di bulise aba ebala mele. Iti, iti ma di pata, ya aba umye no mama do, te osuka apa. Ningo mama unong si meke. Opaya wa Vulamasango. Niamba umye no mama boona. Mna njukunu kuti ipalamende etu ea thod. Kubwa ngo 2018, na niyire etu wa ngo chun, ite etia 2019. Na chige mukuniza wti mve wu 24 months. Ungene wuge mukukulamabango ka 2014. Ngoku ndi etu ka kango, utwa uko na omye umte. Ka ndikesimele abanya abantu, abanya alashali aba ya. Oko ba yusu tusiwu. Abantu abana kela yoboensa, oko ke. Baba na chena kela tochanani cheta haya wu 2018 etu abano. Imbu yekeso yabo bazaku ifuman. Simele abantu abanga tatinduin. Siyakela, siyakela parlamente. Pa ezansi, ba chungini aba abantu ba pa ezansi. Kubabona bazu peke. Ngoku tina apa sizomela boona. Oko imishaba yabo ya itatiwe ne zindu zabo za futuso. Abanya zange ba kwazi, nokuzi replaysa bazense. Ngoku bebe vuya ela kresha ingati imbu yekeso izaba kona. Ngoku ndivaku tuan uchincho lomshaba, lomte. Ngoku siyakela ke ngukindokobana sanu wamba ngenyaa ulonwa bo parlamente. Kubaka loku nipaya ngena nipaya ngukindokobana esiti apa ezansi. Ngoku kongase ni sichonge apa ezansi.
I am Nomzi Mekeeni from Vulamasango. I am together with the previous speaker. First of all, I want to lodge a complaint that we are complaining that parliament, we are too slow with your processes. I remember in Bataweth on the 29th of June 2018 when you were there, you left a promise to our people that after 24 months, you will come back and make the point that you have finalized the claims of 2014. Our people who've been affected from their homes and been removed from their land, who are never compensated, are still hoping that they'll be compensated up until today. That is the claims that were processed or were made in 2014. We are still waiting for them to be finalized. We as Vulamasang we are representing the poor and we are pleading with you. Please take care of the grassroots people, those people who elected you to be where you are. Please don't forget us. And you should also stop with the slow pace because you at parliament, you are engaging a slow pace. And yet we as the people at grassroots, we are struggling and suffering whilst you are still at your slow pace. Thank you.
Eh, ma di bulise kuma lungo parlamente abandwa nabekazi. Nabashali boenge aba koyo kulumshangano ndingusa kumzi wa kwatokoda. Ndimele u Vulamasango singene ndiamba nabama mabe suga apa. Esikthetayo singu Vulamasango, njengoku sasiluele. Ekubeni kwakuvali we after 1999, oba abantu aba be futusiwu ma bapinde ba faga mabango. Se ma singu Vulamasango, satiba kona ba valelu enga pande ma ba vulelu ba vule. We welcome lomte to well land expropriation. Kodwa sine solo ya esiti i imperial law may pasiswe. Simana iba isa wsngetisa. Okuespini ma kukuselwe abantu nemishaba yase zilalini. Abantu abashale ma chjombeni. Nabantu aba myama, aba nefama. Aba kuselwe abantu kulumte. Lastly, siyakhala tina ukutebisa ukoba. Eza claims ka 1998, 1999. Inga sezipatalwe nga teshalinye. Kunesiska 2014 up to 2016. Because eza claims iska 1998, 1999, ezinyezazo siyakothisa. Umye wenga azo. Ba bebe bambe zelekiile na aba abantu bebe faking wo 2014, 2016. So siyakhalela ke oba iparlamente ka inoki ichonge ukuba, azinyekesipatalwe nga kalinye na elo ezo claims. Lastly, noko ikresha eh lilokuzo sabela izimvolitate bitande ukuba lifuchane. Yenyeyendo escondayo oba inga tisingu Vulamasango inga ambe ki ambe ibeke inaki. Engos.
I am Sakumzi Tokota from Vulamasango singene. Greetings to the portfolio committee and our traditional leaders. As there were land claims before 1999, which were closed in 1999, we fought as Vulamasango until those claims were opened again because there were people who were excluded, who were not catered for in the 1999 claims. So another opportunity was given for people to come forward with the claims after we as Vulamasango we have fought. We also request that the imperial laws should be passed because that law is going to assist us. We also plead that the land of the poor people, like people living in rural areas, informal settlement, in farms, that those people's land should be protected. And also we also plead or suggest that the claims of 1998 and 1999, why can't they be joined together with the claims of 2014 and 2016? Because those claims had a lot of hassles and discussions or problems. As a result, they are delaying now the 2014, 2016 claims. We suggested that those claims should be joined and be considered at the same time to be settled and paid out. And one other thing that concerns us as a Vulamasango is the time slot, the time allocation for the public hearings. The time that we are given is very short and we as Vulamasango, we anticipate a problem that we are going to encounter because of this short time.
Ayke mnanke npu ma apa kumasana. Kumasa na, ndinisa. Ilalu masana, ifse name kundi nisa. Indio yu mba kwatatoa umshaba kenge maya setrasta, ndisela ngalo ndo, ndeti londo. Inde nditetayo yuli. Umshabe slali ku opakumasa na singu witu. Go ba o abandwa basuele ka wdala. Si pilela boona. Ilanguji yu tatoa komshaba. As yo language ba be mkebe yazileyo. Di ma ndisiti mna, kwako imbu yekeso. Akwa bi kumbu yekeso, I do not support the bill. Inde sasinitume yona ANC. Kubwa izisani missebeenzee abandwa nini betu. Nense ilela, apu sishala kona. Enda weni yu banense londo. Ele kuba sifuka day and night kutuani ke imali. Ngoku nizakwa yonantosa ekupela kwa yotina esina yu umshaba. Nizisi language efek yu kutata imbu yekeso. Abanga nebanse na ba felusizi. Kubwa ba tetanga lantwa kwatuasasini ku imala, so isifuma. Eyona njo kendi ikrela yu kunebe ndikling bangaba nisbizela yu onantoma benboni motu nizap. Benkling to bangaba nizaubuza indio yu kokbangaba. Inga basisak lungelenaa kupata elizwe singu ANC. Ngoku zimbo nezindo ezimbi, ezense kaya otinasina batshali sisma med. Inga basisafanele kilena nizogbuza kutuwa, sisafanele kilena.
Ingaba sisafanele kilena nizobuza kutuwa, sisafanele kilena kukupa. Kuba kwalay shuni zanayo, bezin ninzisindobe nefanele ba niyazenza. Ngoku nitikimi simishaba eslelikuzu, esleliku enge yo yetu, ekwa kuselotata kuwi. I totally re-eri do not support the bill. Nda badalo, nda badalo, umshaba wase kaya ma ushalepa, language ganda tata niyas, engosi.
I am Mr. Ndisa from Asana. I'm not here to discuss the issue of the land that has been taken by the trust or whatsoever. I'm only here about one thing. The land that we are staying in does not belong to us, it belonged to our forefathers. Now, the language that you are talking of expropriation and compensation, that's not the language our forefathers knew. They knew nothing about expropriation or compensation whatsoever. The only thing that we appointed you to do as the government of the day is that you should create jobs for our kids, build roads, build the infrastructure and get our children employment. But instead, what we see is just corruption and embezzlement of funds. The only thing that we have noticed is that, in fact, what we were expecting, when I saw the convoy of the cars that came here, I thought you as the ANC would come here with a clear question as to whether are we still fit to govern? Are we still suitable to govern as the ANC? That's the question I was expecting from you. Now you come with something that has nothing to do with you because this land was our forefathers' land. There are a lot of issues that you could have dealt with as the government, but you chose an issue that is very sensitive to us, that does not belong to you, does not even belong to us because the land belonged to our forefathers. Whether there is a compensation or not, I do not support the bill.
Mandibuli se lench. Ika malam, ndingu ma tata, kumsile ma kekelash. Ika lamise kraftuin, kueska mtoto. Panzukonkosie uvumsiswe. Avumsiswe. Eh, ondisokmela apa. Kunui ngui kodwa ke kubaleki, sebe ktedlota da wasuka. Kuba njomba nilapanje, niyakot. And ndiyakela ka nisuka apa, niyamba ngetamosa, aniambi wenzela tinasiamba kuso. Ni vulamehlo, nibone, elilizwe la kukajane. Kan dizoma, pan dizoma ngotecha ngomshaba, lokuzo khetuwa ngao. Pakula nda unshala kuwiyo ekraftuin. Sinomshaba pa, umshaba oleleyo. Umshaba oba oalalayo, nawanda ndise kiongwa, noga nani razaalo. Ngoku siteta, niteta ngokutatuwa kumshaba, kapandu kumbiekezo. Di bavelusisi ka ba sebe tatele, abafa na nokwadane, ababe mapha, banga zange bahlauwe. Oe tumshaba ka ubielu, anga nobielu, nga matav. Asina utengi sa getina lamshaba. Koba sifuna pila abandwa nabetu. Umshaba longa oyoanga, sishlelinje, lamshaba awenzuanto. Akukona mduzayo kuti azo stedisa, bazanga pila njani, koba self fellow nazinkomo. Abandwa nabetu bazbaleka, bautsona koma kapa, koma mtaata, koma pitonaspeki. Sishlala njee sise. Sitigenkwa, ngaba niteta ngo pinumshaba kanyagane. Konalomshaba nifunukata, niza wenzani, koba abantu nifunuba tatele umshaba, niza bani kumshaba, niba trainanga. Niza batreinabantu ba kwazusebenza, ulomshaba kwenze bi South Africa zo kwazu kucha. ANC kuti ala sikufotele. Sinama sbaleka siyokngena, kuweminyemi buto, njomba nigo ndikuiti eh, diswa ku ANC, utata wakuan, wandi zala eh ANC. Tibalekiile ngobona, ngonangofa izin, indo esenzeka yoo esibuxungu. Uktatuwa kumali abantu, ichi wanga abantu abambalo. Ngoku ngoku umbuzo amuti, njomba nilapanje, lenishtajanyana yelali nibonayo. Niza kuti ningayo, ukwenze baba abantu belali bapushle, bache. Bafane nabantu ababa hamba ngemo twes mkuulu. Nababo ba kwazukontla abandwa nababo, abafunda yoo abanga koyo anga mkuulu mente. Umbuzo amgenkwa kuti tinani, nasa tinani apesilalini, koba sifuna utreinwa. Siga kwazusebenza ulomshaba. Sine pisanyana yomshaba usulinyelo ayungmama uktuwa ngnotumata. Oe wasbona silusisi, wasilineni.
I am Matata Pumzile ma kekelash from Starmtwin. Starmtwin, Stuff Twin. What I stand here for is a minor issue, but it is very important. The issue of the slow pace has been raised by the previous speakers. I agree with that. As you are coming here, I think you were using the third road, not using the same road that we are using. I will request that you open your eyes and look around you. You'll see the open pieces of land that is not in use. There's nobody who comes here and advises us as to what to do to put that piece of land into use. I repeat those whose land has been taken like the previous speaker before me. The piece of land where we are staying in, we will keep it for our children. As much as it is not fenced, but we will keep it. There's nothing happening in our land, even development, and we don't get anybody to come and train us or advise us as to what to do. Our children left us and some went to Cape Town, Jobek and Amtata because there's nothing happening in the land of their forefathers. As you now talk about expropriation of land, after expropriating this land, what are you going to do with it? The land belongs to us. Will you train the people before giving them the land as to know as to how to utilize the land? The ANC has disappointed us. I was born in the home of ANC by my late father, but I decided to leave the ANC and join organizations like DA because ANC is not helping me. What will you do to develop our areas, in the rural areas? Will you train us and show us as to what to do to put the land into good use? We have been assisted by the woman called Notumato, who used a certain piece of land by creating a home garden. So we are complaining that you don't care about us, you don't assist us. Thank you.
Pam Gobasfumanis Tete Islandelayo. We have been joined by our colleague from the Eastern Cape Provincial Legislature. Umdana wamkuba, umdana walape kaya kukajane, Honorable Nozinyalambiisa. Thank you for joining us, Mbogoto. She is deployed by the ANC in the provincial legislature. She is also the member of the ANC Provincial Executive Committee in Kokelele Isuchonilai. We have a councillor, Mato Dambeki, from the DA. We will then ask those that are coming in too, so that we can introduce them, the councillors. We will introduce abandwa nabekazi, just after the speakers.
Molweni, entlangan swen. Ndiyakalela, kwingosi eskoyo, imika nu, ama ches. Ndiyakalela mataleka, golo malimaku. Ndi ufelamva, wa wasomaana, apa etujwa empash. Ndi mele Imputi Land Claim Committee, ndidi lungu le ANC. Eh, uchulmente wetu, utegla itatin tango. Wazo sifusa besilele, obasa fuduso, sisuselwa itolopi yase tujwa. Sachosayaznoba, simele kubanga, ngomshaba, ngo nineteen ninety six, usugela kwele bangbo. Na namshanjeke, alikati lebe na mpumelero. Abandwa be ikalile lenchela, bapupa. Sitigenogo, kanimshumi se welen komishina, sisaute sifespele songe. Singa zozanga ngomshaba ebesmeluzo zanga au. Yated. Ngoku ulomshaba, uyapangua, kuku kodwa, pa etujwa esilalisbanga yangu mangati. Mbuti, ingagati. Kukulomshaba ge ulapaku entu, ofunuba sisuluke, asali netevolopment. Kodwa umbuzo wetu, uti, indoni, eza bagdo devolopment, yabandwa nabetu kunyenati. Asiti ma ingabi kuitolopi, koba naati, sikamla gula tolopi, no taisemshaba niwetu nje. Kanisnwe disa uchulmente wetu, esimtanda yoo. Kanisnwe disa zungosi zetu, banini bomshaba. Ndi teta ulufolam, kanti zahshala pansi nditi. Ulomshaba uniengweleka, eza bulawazi sifuba, eslelemakaya, zshumba, panzukomshaba, kumshaba nalowo. Kanisisi sooba, kamla njani na umtu, omnyama kulamshaba, egukamla kuwa amazwa ngapeshe. Ulomshaba onkopa zabaza, kaujonga go free state. Abekona abantu, aba myama, abanobu thule. Abano titanino utata ngapandu kumbio rezo, bakamle kuwa, diabuler.
Greetings to the traditional leaders present here. And the chiefs, chiefs from surrounding areas. I am Velamva Soman. I am coming from Dujwa. I am representing Mbuti Land Claims Committee. I am also a member of the African National Congress. A lot has been said by the previous speakers. But what we are here to say to the leadership that is in front of us. You are our government. When you took leadership, we were happy. We had hopes that you opened our eyes in that we were forcefully removed from the Dujwa area. You opened our eyes in that we need to lodge our claims around the year nineteen ninety six. But up to now, there is no success with respect to those land claims. Other people died waiting for their compensation. Another thing that I would like to say is that, could you please talk to the land commission so that they can speed up the process? Because people have been waiting. Another thing that I would like to bring to the attention of the committee. We do have land that is invaded, like in the villages of Mangati, Magati and Mbuti. Another land which is really a victim of invasion is the land which is closer to N2. What we need from our government is to assist us so that out of the development, our children can get employed. What we are noticing is that we do have land, but we are not benefiting from the land. We are appealing to our leaders in government, to our traditional leaders, to make sure that people benefit from the land. It's a pity you are not aware that the other people who are working hard, but they are benefiting nothing. If you look at the Free State area, there are large parcels of land. If our people can access those land, for example, at least that will bring good news to our people. Thank you very much.
We have also been joined by two ANC councillors from Bashemun municipality, who councillor Kanda, councillor Kanda, engosi, and then councillor Baleni. Opu councillor Baleni, engosi, engosi.
Kuyalesanju, opakati kuitu, ukona otayaba basuka empash. Utayaba ukanda nokan, utayaba ubaleni, engosi.
Mandinibuli se, ika malam, ndingu anaalawa kwa mtaku, upuma etu sakwepe. Mtaaku. Umbuzo, imibu zonjenza ibu zapame, binika. Umbuzo okala, onkaba leproses, yoku tata kumshaba, isa utata ikreselinga kanani. Unobangi la nbusu lombuzo, se kuti alikuwa, inobangu kuse ilinile, ba iapela ngikreselitini. Umbuzo usbinu, njengoku sipuma pa etu sakwepe. Kuwemshabi ni oba ngueyo, kutuwa umshaba kakulumendu zohlala yangu umshaba kakulumendu. Umbuzo, onkaba. Aba abantu ba be kulamshaba, bayo tuze bakamle, uchulumendu za kwenzanchani, kaba abantu ba be kulamshaba oba ngueyo. Iminyaka, inobangu kuku, inga mashomoma binana anye. Zange koba koneni, indo abandwa bakamla yoo, aban ba be kulanda yoo, iba ngueyo. Ngoku sisi 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 sakunkeomba, difuna ukue unte asuba, onkaba kuza kwenzwa kancha, nuzo bakamle. Engosi.
Greetings to the members present in the meeting. My name is Anna Alomteaku. I am coming from the Duersatwebe. I've got only two questions that I would like to bring for your attention. The first one relates to the process that you have undertaken. I just want to check how long is it going to take? Because a process needs to have a starting point and an end point. There is progress, you are saying, but we want to check for how long it is going to take. I come from the Duersatwebe area. The land that has been claimed already. We are told that there's land that belongs to government that is out of question because that land would remain untaxed. I just want to check. I just want to check, how long do people have to wait in order to benefit after lodging their claims? Because people have lodged their claims, but not even a single one is a beneficiary out of those claims. I just want to check for how long I must must wait. Thank you very much.
Eh, mani bulise, kwa baspati lelenkubo, bulise engosi zetu, songe, bulise ukomto ngaparati olue. Eh, tumalbo ngu, morantin, esugawla ngomtsaba se koch. Ullala ne kutwa iapa mwa sa, panzi kweyo engosi akwachali, manzezu. Eh, di ku, di, di tunyelwe iti eyi apa, ba manize apa, umbuzo amokala. Di tu ngbamna, isi intu esinjenge isi. Be ongafalanga mapepa landu afunda apa, nzo afunda apa. Amapepa be falba asiwa pa, apostala konezalini. Siti si intu esinga, 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 esinga. Koba namtsajin, dia kala tibana, nindueteta, goshlo, oketwa ngayo apa. Di shukuti ge lo, ndo itetindoba inkoso esalini asi. Koba lem, lama pepa so anegapes nwa tane, be ongafalanga basitibana naso apa, kwa obega, ndu uchulumende, uyasen, uyasen, uyaseninko. Di sijon, di sijige, inkoso ba yalali naziku, be falba okalue ngazo, okalau angando ya ngomtsaba, koba umtsabi alali nisinao. Naao, mndanengomlimi. Kotwa ndaza, mandanama, antikongosa, kumakonga, kama konga, nditelo ngetiswa, ngen, ngen, ndo zo kulima, ndanama. Andu azu ge ngogulo ngomtsaba, uza utatu ni kweba, noketwa ngao apa. Shukuti ge, uchulumende, awesenge ti, si ku intu esininzi, sia, sia safari ishe alali. Ne ntlele sia mbakuzu, okasi zapakunzi. Ben, kat, mbamba ongakalau angali, ndo, okalau asinko, nzo bandu inoka. Si ku asu basiti si zapakuachian, okasuwa ngapetwa, kasi ambe ku ntlela, ez farane, ez inie mbakuzu. Di shukuti, ngomti eto loke ona, andezunge nanzu, ngoba ke, andinanto bakaza, oba, lo ngomti, lo ngomtsaba nufuna, nupese nini, engosi.
Greetings to the members present in the meeting. My name is Malboni Mte. I come from the area called Kocha, under chief Manzezu. I am a member of the DA. There is a question that I would like to bring to the house for attention. The first issue that I want to raise is the issue of documents. We were not given the documents or the papers before we attended the meeting. We only received the documents outside, and that is limiting our ability to participate in this meeting. Another area that I would like to bring to you for your attention. In our villages, government is not providing us with services that we need. Our government is supposed to start with services before considering the issue of land. Another area that I would like to bring to your attention is that, I am practicing farming where I come from. But I have been looking for assistance all over the place, to all the government offices. But I was not given the support that I needed. Now, another question that I would like to bring to the attention of the house is that, you are talking about expropriation of land. What are you going to do with this land? All we need is services that must be brought to the people. Our roads are bad. We will be happy if you can make sure that our roads are in a manner that, which is similar to the roads that you were using when you came from Iduja. Because our roads are really in a bad state. Regarding the bill, unfortunately, I won't be able to contribute, because I received the documents only today. And you are supposed to give us the documents earlier, so that we can be familiar with the contents, before we attend to meetings of this nature. Thank you very much.
Mani bulise, ti nguluunga wakonani, ti, nani. Di panzi kwe Duessa Tweba, di se, umtsaba se obeli. Eh, am, ifa, kapshungu, goofasen, ndilafa nyani, ke, ngable, status tuboshla. Akondo nza itetin nga, konza uteta, kaninngoba, di tetile status pamboa. Yona ipshungu, indi oba, uchulumende, utika umfayo eteta, isi ngasa ngatiti. Koba isi intu esininzi, sia pumilimnu ni, basi report ya bandu eva, eva slali. Singi si, goshlo bolwazi, zingabuu, koba nezi, nezi claims, zazi, siwe, ku ba, kwa kutetwa ngazo, ku ba slali basetuwa sakwe. Zazi pumilimnu ni, akomdu ya si basa ochonapi. Ipindi, jengoba si tetia uchulumende, ospete. Intlela si mbii, kwa ngel, ngelche si, si lap, imi si mbipshungu. Oba, oninkokeleka uchulumende, lokisha le itolopi, iambetin. Abantu, aba bangena makama, ai ba oyang, aba oyu abanda bangena makama. Umdo osa, osa bela guye, bayabazi, uchulumende ya bazza bandu bak. Uba bana so isi intu esinga lunganga, bangasisi, ez lungileya bangasisi bandu. Agate tin nga abu, uyaba kuse. Yose, ku beni, ni aba bandu basale ema pantli, ni bena oyu uchulumende. Bale, kwa utuwa, naaku, kuza ufotwa ngu, ubonindu ngati inchuku. Ba ambe, bos pumisela kakulu pa, yo kweyo slapa ipa, elali. Kwa inakuwa, buwa, bangenyaa, ufula kupume kale, nyo chonelatin, ubale kutuli, olusoko nzo angabo, mkuwa kutwa, kukayfuti. Ebushungu, ndu nyenzewandu. No bangtsambi, ningamane, nische, chezi, ndu, nisenza, nisngualiza, kotwa, imbii, ndu nyenzewandu. Asindaanga, ndu wenzaseteta, koba, abasaliba, abasaliba, nikokele, basi tetilezi, engosi.
Greetings to the members in the meeting. My name is Lunga Nuni. I come from the Duessa Tweba, in the area called Obeni. What I feel right now is the pain. Speakers before me have spoken. I don't have much to say. What I would like to say or to bring to your attention is that, our government usually comes to us. Our government pronounces about various issues, but all those issues are not fulfilled. We have been waiting for those promises, but they are not fulfilled unfortunately. For example, in our area, there is a claim that we have lost. But up to now, we are not successful, because we have not benefited. The government, which is in power, is not attending to us. Our roads are really bad. My body as I speak is really sore, because of the conditions of the roads that we are using. You are happy because you are using tar roads, but the people from our areas feel that they are neglected. Another area that I would like to bring to your attention is the question of services. Services are not brought to the people, especially those in the villages. What we notice is that, before we are involved in elections, when parties are campaigning for votes, you bring red dust to our roads. As a result, we cannot walk, there is a lot of dust, because our roads become busy only during the time of elections. After elections, things go back to normal. What we are bringing to you for your attention is that, you only attend to us, only when you are campaigning for votes. Really, what we are experiencing from our communities is really not a good service from the government that we elected. We are having those bad experiences about our government, that is, which is really neglecting us. Speakers have spoken before me. Thank you very much.
Sia blela kakulu, kubobonge, abate ba veza isi mvo zabo, ngalom tetosu zisa apakuni. Eh, sisa unikesla, ke kuingosi sa. Di tala ukwazi sa, ez engosi ziphakati kuwetu. Eh, abazu phakama, kabantu anabekazi, ku, ku phakamisangi salda, tala ngipamisangi salda, ngulonda uhlilku. Sinongosi mka eke, wasekua dana. Eh, sinongosi, uza nenkulule ko sala kupathwa, wasepote, Traditional Council. Sinongosi uzwe liveli le sitwa, wasepote, Traditional Council. Sinongosi, umandla engosi funda kubi, we imika nu, Traditional Council. Sinongosi mtunzi ni pinase, we zache, Traditional Council. Sinongosi maduna slava, ngube zulu, Traditional Council. Sinongosi, ngube kadi, who is also the chaplain of the Contralessa, Mba, Traditional Council, Eliotain. Sinongosi makuluni zuela shuku ma, Mputi, Traditional Council. Sinongosi bafana tonga, ekatiwa, Traditional Council. Sinongosi esze timfazwe, eh machesi, Traditional Council. Kosi umgesane, Kocha, Traditional Council. Kosi ma kwalisa, Pati, Traditional Council. Kosi ma zamisa, Mvelini, Traditional Council. Kosi jongikaya, Fokazi, Ngabeni, Traditional Council. Kosi jongukolo si kidi, Kisele, Traditional Council. Kosi nosi intu manwa, lindwa, Traditional Council. Namkele kilenonke, zingosi zaukuti, eh, sisa unike lakuni ke ngoku, uku ba, ni veze ezenu izinvo. Ngalom teto uyilwayo, uza ma ukupelisa umteto, okoyo nguku, osebenzayo. Kotwa umtetolo, owa ubekwe ngula uchulumende wa angapambili ngo 1975. Olau la, indoba uchulumende, angau tata njani, ngomtsaba, oka ni properties. Ukwenze la infuno zabantu, nezitingo zabantu. Eh, asusunka, mbage zungosi zaukuti, eh, ndi kulela paisalini. Eh, sisa utala nje, indoba aboba zauteta, bangangenani, apa ku kwezi zidul. Eh, buanga ba funu tetapesengosi.
Zoi taza lo, ukwenzel ba, abantu kunyenengosi zabo, naabo ba fakali sei isi mvo zabo. Kaningena ke ngomtsanga pambili, kule ndineno kwenza no ngomtsaba. Ndi zaugala ngiliti, ngomtsabi tinasi bubkus. Indo etetwa si iti, ne solo kosa iteta, yiti ngomtsanga pambili. Jengoba uyawkwazi, indo kuba, ekungeni, nikwalu uchulumende mcha, ngo 1994. Ungenebe kuuko ama pantli kuelizwe. Ebe kutuwa kai biswa zitipi vs. states. I transkai, ibo putadwana, i venda, ne siskai. Kwa se kwa konake, i pantla la kwa zulu nadal, ebeli biswa ngobalo na li self governing state. Lazegelona la pantla la kwa zulu nadal. Lenza kaku hlemasla, minila zakel umteto, gukulaulu ngomtsaba, ngakumbu ngomtsaba wasema kaya. Umteto kutwa ingonyama thrust, yasi butati nagelo ngu. Naao, indu ndisale ku yoke ili. Emven koba lamapantleti, ya nisiwe onke, ungena ku uchulumendo mcha ngo 1944. Lamiteto ya au, ibi iko ilaulu ngomtsaba, ibi nigama kunya ngukpeleleyo isi, ku mka dinengosi. Uku ba, zipate imishlabazila, ulefora bandu bazza. Ya pelewa lo miteto. Uchulumende wa umteto myoti. Ngomtsaba wasemsans Africa, ngakumbilubu tatuwa kutipi vs. states, ne minye kime shaba. Is state land, it is held in trust by South African government through the Minister of Land Affairs. That is the current state of affairs. That is the current state of affairs. It had ukutulondo asina meshaba, eslalin. Kuwe meshaba lisitye yetu, gokwase snwa tinisenu. Is state land, it's held in trust by the minister. Nan sige malsamini ndesiteta. Uchulumende magakale. Abu isele imishaba ya seslalin. Le ibi lawu la zinkosi ya ban du bazu. Gobe meshaba ya seslalin, imishaba yininkosi na ban du bazu. Na usidige ngoku na natina, uchulumende pamo goba kale na ipininku. Makabu isele lo mlaba esitlingba nguwo lowo ubange laba kutua kukumshaba. Onkut thirteen percent, ngulammlaba wa ukate uki homeland. Sidiwa onge lammlaba, ngukunjeban mi ap. Ukavari sa limishaba yitraditional councils, oka yitraditional authorities as koi. Sidiwa onge lo mlaba which is covering all traditional authority areas. Ma ubu iselu with immediate effect, ezingili, nuguzingila zikuazu uklawu umhlaba, zulawalela ban du bazu. Zingati sana ban du bazu, ewkunseksinba, eslali, nikulali nelali, agukomdu nenngayoka, bina mlaba. Goba lamishaba, imishaba yokokobi etu. Situ, oguesmi ini siiti. Lo mlaba onkui eighty seven percent, usezanzini zonga lungulu abangoklinaga mkonon njebasiteta. Uba uya utikausuka panusi, ubu yepot Alfred. Na ukriti epot liya semond, ukwela. Ufike ufmanzba abaniga sbala mlaba ukuyo umma echolum. Kabelu ngaba bi ni oka nyaba tat, ukpe la, onge lammlaba. Yovakunkomese, nyama zotu esfana yo, ifmanzmi ndodenyi, ine fami kuwetala lenkela. Nakula kitala lenkela, yoo mman ku mful. Ufmanzba indodenyi, emshopele, ukawel mful. Ufike kuwanyi fam, ufmanzba ufuizlo anyana. Sa senze na lo mlaba, indodenyi ngapa na ngapa. Uyofike pot Alfred ufmanzba. Abaniga sbala mlaba usua pe epot emond, uyome pot Alfred, ufmanzba, gamado da mani oka nyamasan, amshope ukpe. Ufika ban du abamnyama ba ku etu. Be ukani swae echolumga, paylali, ufmanzba kukui administrative area kutua echolum. Abantu ba kutuuka ni swae pabo ona. Lamado da na lo mlaba mkuu nusua pe mondupera pa, mabiruwa imata. Sidike uchulumende magaza, mukala lenku, buwa yukuiselu mlaba, si thasa. Indio kuiselu go mlaba utatuwa, ku ngabu yegeswa mtu. Ngakumpi na ngakumpi, kua ababa utaten go konyama, kan sidike. Sitalo na nganiso. Siya thasa ndo kuiswa go mlaba, gapantlu kuwembu yegesu. Andi teti ngalo mlaba, ushele uwa kutiwona, lusezlalin. Anpegisuku, mlaba ukajani, uwa setujuwa, uwa setoka. Dipegisa kuwa lo mlaba usezanzini zabantu, abambalo. Ungapesunule, kubunga kupai zizwe, nelali ezimillion, kumshaba wendodenyi. Pekisa kuwa lo mlaba. Si lammlaba uchulumende eighty seven percent. Ma utatwe, gapantlu kuwembu yegesu, ngoba na ban du okubo ngoku. Babu utatwe go ufa kuwanyi anfan ripi kuwelizwe, go sixteen fifty two. Benga, benga utenga anga kutu, besidetile, ba utanjoku yau kwazi, indogo kuwa. Apa Eastern Cape? Ngakumpi kule ndausku yoma samini. Kuliwé infazwe, ez ngapesu kuwetoba, more than nine fati hours that were fought here. Ngongosi mankoma, okumkanu zanzolo, okumkanu sachili. Songi kumkaneninkosi zetu zafa, ez yezafelupatwe. Ez yin troko sazo, azkabi konala mlaba nje sabu ulawa, sanguyuli troko kuemkuwa nazwa, ngama chamani kuwa nazo chamani. Zesilwe lo mlaba zuku se. So yiswa ngamangis nama pool. Sidi ma ubu yegelu mlaba utuwa kukumkari zetu. Ubu yele kutu, uchulumende eighty seven percent, ngoba. Na usuka payka apa? Cape of Good Hope, ungena inland uzezwe. Imbalia kutalelba, kwa kukwa batwa paya, kwa kukonokaga ngopa. Baro tuwa ngemali nis peleti, ne kama nondoni, abanye babetwa baktsineswe, labemka. Wa tatu mlaba waabo ngamangis nama pool. Sidike ubani tetan ku kuiswa go mlaba gapantlu kuwembu yegesu. Ma kukaluwa lotabi, lugo kuwa, mven kuwetaba lukaluwa yegesu, go mlaba onke ya seslalin. Ubu iselizngili. Ma itabela ndelayo, ma kubuiselu eighty seven percent, kwezizwe owa utatwe kuso. Mandipindi. Ma kubuiselu umhlaba, kuba ninio, ngoko kuwa owa utatiwe, ngokuembaali. Amakoe san, abu iselu umhlaba waabo. Abatwa, ba buiselu umhlaba, ngokuwesazizwe zabo, pam ko bagu zo fikwa inland. Kule ndausku yongoku, kuwa trutu mlaba kuikumkari nenkosi zetu, ma buiselu lo mlaba, ngolo shor, ya kule.
Greetings to the Chairperson and the Portfolio Committee, the political leaders, from all organizations, the traditional leaders, the government officials. First of all, I want to thank you as the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure for thinking it wise to come to us when you are about to amend and repeal the previous law and introduce a new legislation that you came to us, the traditional leaders and the community to give us opportunity to make our inputs. The new legislation that is there, before I support it, I want to state that maybe you noticed the way we as traditional leaders, we do things in our areas. But yes, from nineteen ninety four, when you took over, the history of the country changed, but before then, we had the so-called TPV states then, with the exception of Kwasulu Natal, which was had a different way of doing things and which also assisted them in the sense that the land that they own was put under the Ngonyama Trust. After we have taken over as the government of today, the Democratic Government, all provinces were joined. And since then, all the legislation that was in place in our areas, these TPV states, came to an end. And then the land that was under the control of our traditional leaders, which is the thirteen percent, was taken by the minister and put under the trust of the government of the day, which is under the control of the minister. We say now, the first thing that should be done by the government before doing anything is to return that land that was under the control of the traditional leaders, that is the thirteen percent. So that the traditional leaders should share the land that is under their control to their people and make sure that there is no individual that will stay without having land. Secondly, the eighty seven percent that is there, if for instance you drive from East London to Port Alfred, you'll find a beautiful piece of land there which is rich, but that piece of land will be under one owner, a white man. And you'll even see their cattle, all their cattle that they are having is in one color. That is the land that belongs to a one owner. And some of them, when you look on the other side, you'll find another piece of land, same white farm owners, they would be farming with game farms or wild animals. And our people, that is the poor black people, will be begged in the area that is called Cholomna, which is a rural area. We support the expropriation of land without compensation, but not the expropriation of the land of the traditional leaders. When I say I support the expropriation, I'm referring to the expropriation which is the eighty seven percent that is owned by these farmers that I referred to. Some of the land, you'll find it being owned by one farmer, or some of them, you'll find them two and so forth. There were wars that took place under our different kings, King Rinsa and the others. And one of our kings, his head was taken out overseas, you don't know where, even it's in Germany or where. And his head was never brought back to our land. And furthermore, if you look at the Cape of Good Hope, there at the Cape of Good Hope, before it became the Cape of Good Hope, there were people staying there. The koi and the San community used to own that land. We also include them when we say the first war that has to take place now is the returning of the thirteen percent that belongs to the traditional leaders. The second war should be the return of the eighty seven percent that is under the hands or the control of the white farmers. When they came here during the time of Yan Fan Ripick in sixteen fifty two, they did not come with any piece of land to this country. The land that they own, they got it by fighting with our people. Where our people fought, there were a lot of wars that took place for the return of land. Even the koi and the San people, they supposed to be getting back their land. So we support this bill with the hope that the thirteen percent will be brought back to us and eighty seven percent will be recovered from those who got our land through the spilling of our blood. Thank you.
Mandibulise mchala ngapambili. Mandibulise, wongu mdo lapa. Timkunkosi uzunguzane, wa makiti traditional council. Nize apa. Namta ba banisuka paistu lenzo, ma bapamkuwene. Unentlungu, enchangu. Uchulumende wetu, uza wa ke paratiku etu, angazanga iteti. Ukusonde la wa ke uchulumende wetu kuti, wacha konanya indwa za wikitkimisa. Emalunga, namakomkulu. Utela indogo kuwa, abe mnetis, ku makomkulu. Namtlange, ngonmungu ngoku, indogo kuwa, nize apa kuti. Nje ngoko, nishkeli apa, ani kombis, indogo kuwa ngaba, ani zangospota. Nje ngoko sasunkosi, nizofuna uwa ngamela, ni na futi ngoku. Olashlo bo, nketengala ugala, anutetu ngoku, nichinja amaru. Sizinkosi zizo, mthoni amagasemakaya. Sizomela izizwe zetu apa. Zizwe ezuslamba yonapa ya, nislibeleyo, go October siya vota. Sizofota la uchulumende wetu. Chulumende lo ngasazi. Pati na ban du mva njema ni kuwela apa. Konaa, pamba sizi apa ukajani, benga ngena ya ku makomkulu. Indonu chulumende ka ensi ngasazi. Basizinkosi, kodwa yenam, usuka lupatwa ensi, ensi nusunkosi. Namtlange, uslibeleyo nunkosi. Akasas, nda ono koko, uyaspelisa wan. Ikumbula. Paya ku nineteen three. Sida kuni nikama paka tuienu, angokansila. Inga tetu kutilo ndo deyo, kodwa kutua bukosi beenu. Namtlange, ukansilu ngapezulu kuwengosi. Kodwa ngonofa yes. Mna ngulife, kodwa ndilibelewa na chulumende, kuwa ngulife gamalamo. Se tini nganu tina makomkulu, nize njani, nitekumi tetuwa yonke, nizawitalezana zemakaya. Kodwa niza kuti ni na ngoku, tina ba ngoswa, nizawutela tina. Si kwele ipinwelo, ensi. Indoni, si kutanga anga ensi, thasa zalando ulenze. Engosi.
I'm Chief Zunguzane from Makiti Traditional Authority, or Council. The reason why I came here is the pain that I hear. The things that you are doing today are hurting us. Government promised after taking over that you are not going to take anything from us or to interfere with our rule. And you promised that you will support the royal families or the traditional leaders. We are traditional leaders by birth and we represent our people. In October, we are expected to go and vote, but what you are doing to us is not fair. And even when you came here, you did not even go to our people. If I may ask for example, did you even bother to go to the Great Palace? That is the royal family, did you even go to them before coming to there, to speak to their people? You want to take over from us, but in nineteen ninety three, you said you, we said we're going to give you councillors, but you are not going to interfere with us. But today, the councillors are given a more status and higher status than the traditional leaders. Forgetting that they are same councillors, they are authorities only for five years. We even call them no five years, and I am alive, because the authority I have is for life. We live, we love you, ENC. What is it so painful that you are doing to us? You are embarrassing us. Thank you.
Engosi impatinku. Mandibulise islalo. Eh, wale parliament. Bulise, wendono bengosa balapa ngapakati. Eh, councillors. Na onke ama kosa agachulumende alapa namtlange. Eh, nenanku governmental organizations esnazo, apa ngapakati. Lona utetayo ngukosufutu mere, eh ekocha, vilali ya se Hobeni. Eh, oka nguchepesini. We traditional council ya kuwa ngubezulu.